This event is being recorded by Service Electric Television and will be broadcast and then posted on YouTube. No part of this recording may be used or distributed by any person, candidate, campaign, or political group for any purpose whatsoever. Candidates may provide a link on their websites to the full YouTube video. Only our authorized videographers allowed to record this forum. Many thanks to the Luzerne County Community College, especially Susan Spry and Jerry Wilk for providing this venue. Thanks also to our League Board and members, all volunteers who are working this event tonight. Thank you to the candidates for their availability tonight. Democrats Denise Williams, Dawn Simmons, Chris Bellis, Stephen Coslett, Tony Persia. Republicans John Lombardo, Brian Thornton, Stephen J Urban, Jackie Scarsella, and Greg Wulovich. Thanks especially to their wranglers, I'm sorry, I don't know what actual job you have, but I'm gonna call you wranglers. Diane Dreyer for the Democrats and County Councilmember LeAnn McDermott for the Republicans. We look forward to hearing their positions on the variety of issues that face Luzerne County. Most importantly, audience, thank you for being here. We hope the information gleaned tonight will assist you in making informed decisions on Election Day on November 4th or on your mail-in ballot. Please be reminded that the deadline for registering to vote is Monday, October 20. At this time, please silence your cellphones. The questions you will be hearing tonight have been developed by our board. They have not been made available to any of the candidates before this evening. As time permits, we will be accepting questions in writing from the audience. Please ask our League members for a card and pencil. Questions should be addressed to all candidates and should be limited to one subject only. Our moderator this evening, Dr. Mark Stein, is Professor of Communications and Media Studies at Wilkes University. We thank you, Dr. Stein, for accepting our invitation and preparing for this important job. The order in which the candidates will speak was determined by draw. The order in which the questions are asked will be rotated so that the first question will be asked of the candidate who went second in the opening statement, and so on. Candidates will be each given a one-minute period for an opening statement. The candidate will be given a one-minute period to respond to each question. Each candidate will be given one minute for a closing statement at the end of the forum. The order for the closing statement will be the reverse of the opening statement order. We ask that you hold any applause until the end of the forum after the closing statements. The hallmark of democracy is the willingness of all members of our community to afford each other courtesy and respect. In that spirit, we ask you give your complete and silent attention so that our candidates may have the fully allotted time to state their positions without interruption. And now I will introduce Dr. Mark Stein.
Thank you so much. Good evening. Thank you for being here, audience, and candidates, thank you for being here. Let's get right into it. To begin, we will have opening statements, and we will start with candidate Coslett. You have one minute.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time out of your day to be here with us today. This is very important, I think, for everybody to get an idea of what each candidate offers and what each candidate is about. So at this time, I just want to, oh, I'm sorry. I just want to thank everybody for being here, and please listen carefully and make sure you get out and vote. Thank you.
Candidate Thornton.
Yeah, good evening, everyone, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting a forum tonight. That was very nice. I am Brian Thornton, and I currently sit on Luzerne County Council. I was born and raised in Luzerne County, one of nine children, who grew up in West Pittston Borough. I've been married for 35 years, and I have two adult children. I graduated from Wyoming Area High School and later Lehigh University with a Bachelor of Science in Mechanical Engineering. I then worked as a civil engineer in New York City and Northern Jersey in the 80s. I later switched careers and worked in financial services for 30 years until my retirement. I also served for 11 years on West Pittston Borough Council, six of those as Council President. As a current Luzerne County Councilmember, I chair the Budget and Finance Committee. I chair the Act 13 Committee. I chair the Authorities Boards and Commissions Committee, and I am Vice Chair of the County Retirement Board. Thank you again. Good luck.
Candidate Urban.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen J Urban. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening. Currently, I reside in Kingston. I'm a full-time IT Support Technician for a major food distributor, a part-time Assistant Restaurant Manager, also a nightclub and mobile DJ. I'm a former county councilman. For eight years, I served, for eight years on county council. Currently, I serve as an elected member of Luzerne County Government Study Commission, hoping everyone, you know, supports the proposed revised charter on November 4th along with my candidacy. My focus is to conduct the business of the county with conservative principles and values, utilizing fiscal restraint while providing the quality and responsive county services such as mental health care of children and youth and senior services. We must also ensure we have fair elections with the utmost integrity and also ensure our county infrastructure, such as roads and bridges, are maintained or rebuilt. Thanks.
Candidate Simmons.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. My name is Dawn Simmons, and I'm running for Luzerne County Council. I am a resident of Wilkes-Barre. I've been in Wilkes-Barre since 2012. I'm originally from the Bronx, but I chose Luzerne County as my home and raised my family here. I'm a veteran, I'm a Realtor, I'm a mom, and I strive to do bold things for Luzerne County, and I think that if you support me, I would be a good candidate to do that. Thank you.
Candidate Wulovich.
Good evening. My name is Greg Wulovich. I'm running for Luzerne County Council. I'm a current county councilmember. I've served 18 years at Wilkes-Barre Township Wegmans, where I'm currently the Operations Manager overnight, so if you ever need help with anything, come find me. I've also been a Luzerne County resident my whole life. I attend to King's College, where I received my Bachelor's Degree in Accounting. That accounting degree goes a long way in what we do on county council, making sure we're promoting fiscal responsibility, make sure we're working together to make the tough decisions. You know, it's not an easy job being on county council. There's a lot of tough decisions that need to be made. They're not made lightly. So I appreciate everybody here on this stage that's running for office. You know, it takes a lot of courage, a lot of will, a lot of power, you know, to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the people in this room and the people in this county. There's 330,000 residents in Luzerne County. You know, it's our responsibility to make sure each and every one is getting the government they deserve. That's why I'm running for county council, is to make sure that everybody is getting what they deserve, and I represent each and every one of you. Thank you.
Candidate Bellis.
Professor, thank you to you for being here tonight, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. Thanks to my fellow candidates for coming out, and to the audience. Thank you for being here, doing your civic duty, and hopefully being interested in the process and interested in all of us as candidates. I grew up in East End and in the Back Mountain, and I'm running for Luzerne County Council because I care about the people that are here and I want to make life better for them. Professionally, I'm an analyst, and I have a skill set that is unique. I can help innovate the county, grow our economy, attract the correct, I will repeat the correct, kind of development that will bring in better-paying jobs, expand the tax base, but most importantly, it'll make this place seem or continue to seem like its home. I look forward to your questions. I love being in the hot seat, and thank you.
Candidate Scarsella.
Good evening, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. I'm Jackie Scarsella, and I'm running as a Republican candidate for Luzerne County Council. I live in Hazel Township, and I work at Penn State Hazleton as a Development and Alumni Stewardship Officer. I partner with alumni and donors to create opportunities for students to succeed. Before joining Penn State, I spent over 20 years in the financial industry, gaining the experience to manage resources responsibly. I also served two terms on the Hazleton Area School Board, where I worked hard to balance large budgets while keeping taxes low and always putting our students and families first. Beyond my professional work, I've always believed in giving back, whether it's serving on local boards, supporting community organizations, or rescuing dogs and cats in need of safe and loving homes. I'm running because I deeply care about our county, and I want to bring responsible leadership, fiscal accountability, and strong community values to our county government. I believe in common sense values like election integrity, paper ballots, and photo ID. Thank you.
Candidate Lombardo.
Hello, everybody. My name's John Lombardo. I'm the current Chairman of County Council, seeking another four-year term. I'm a lifelong resident of the county. I'm a graduate of Pittston Area High School and Penn State University, so if you're a Notre Dame fan, I apologize for that. In my full-time career, I'm a firefighter, EMT, and in my job, I've learned to work with people in the most dangerous of situations so that we can achieve an outcome that literally saves lives. I brought those skills with me to county council, where we've worked together with our colleagues and with the administration and the public to move our county forward. As Chair of Council, I've been decisive, fair, and firm. I've dedicated my entire adult life to serving others, and these last four years on county council have been no exception. I've always taken this job seriously, made tough decisions with the residents in mind, and not my ideology, and I'm proud of how far we've come. At the end of the day, experience matters on council, and together, we've built a foundation for a renaissance in Luzerne County, and we need strong, dedicated leaders who will take it across the finish line, and I believe I'm one of those leaders. Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this important forum. I'm Denise Williams. My husband Gary and I live in Shaver Town. I've spent my career serving others as a nurse, as Coordinator of Religious Education at St. Teresa's Church in Shaver Town for more than 20 years, and through civic leadership with Fair Districts PA, and as the former Chair of the Luzerne County Board of Elections. I'm running for county council because I believe government must be transparent, accountable, and focused on the people, not political insiders. I'm not interested in partisan games or division. What I am interested in is bringing people together to solve problems, support our county employees, and make decisions that serve every resident of Luzerne County. Together, we can build a stronger, fairer county government that truly works for all of us. Thank you.
Candidate Persia.
My name is Tony Persia. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight at LCC, and I just want to thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And I also want to thank my wife, Linda, and we just celebrated our 52nd anniversary yesterday. We have two children, six grandchildren, and first-generation American, lifelong resident of Luzerne County. I want to thank the candidates for being here, especially my colleagues. I'm very proud of all of them, and I just wanted to say that we are the A-Team. We are good. And the audience, I am so proud that you are here to do your civic duty. Thank you for coming.
All right. Thank you, candidates. Let's move on to the very first question. The question is, what do you think is the most significant challenge facing Luzerne County in the next five years and why? And we will start with candidate Thornton.
Thank you. Yeah, without a doubt, in my opinion, it's...
The microphone's not on.
How about now? In my opinion, we undoubtedly need a new prison. We have a very old, outdated prison, which has a lot of dangerous spots in it. It's been told to us by state inspectors, blind spots. It's decrepit. It's serving its purpose now. We average 500 inmates a day. It's a tough, tough place to work, and the way the prisons are built today, they're built nothing like that vertical prison over there on Water Street. It's an enormous challenge. It's going to cost between $400 and $600 million. Where the county would get money like that, I have no idea right now, but it's something we need to put on our radar screen right now. The good news is, in four and a half years from now, our debt will be paid off completely in the county, debt that was inherited over 15 and 20 years ago by former county commissioners. So we'll have a lot of money freed up in 2030, but that is the biggest challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Urban is next.
I think I'd have to concur with what Brian said, but probably expound upon that and stay, you know, overall infrastructure, roads, bridges, are also very important, so I think money is the most significant challenge, is where are you going to get the money to fund the various projects that we need out in the communities, you know, such as the East and, or the Nanticoke Bridge, the bridges down in Pittston. There's other bridges also out in other communities in the southern end of Luzerne County. We have roads that we also need to repair. Hopefully, you know, if we repair them as a county, we can convey them back to the municipality, so the county's not responsible for them, but the municipalities are. The prison is definitely a big-ticket item, so you'd be looking at probably anywhere between $500 million to $1 billion of investment here in Luzerne County. Hopefully, through tax base, though, we can gain that funding someday.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
Well, in my opinion, I believe that housing and the lack of affordable and available housing for middle-income and lower-income families and homeless population is a burgeoning problem that we're going to have in the county, especially with the program for housing for the homeless closed recently. We have seen an influx of homeless people in the square and around the county, and I think as a Realtor, we have opportunities with the Blighted Commission and other institutions like that that are in councils' sphere to fix.
Thank you. Candidate Wulovich.
I have to concur with some of the original statements from some of the previous candidates. Finances in Luzerne County is a struggle. As Mr. Thornton said, we're burdened with financial struggles from many, many years ago, and over the last few years, since Home Rule's taken over, we've been working on that. We've been paying off our county debt, $26 million a year. In five years, that will be gone. So what we need to do is, for the next five years, is focus on our finances, make sure we're spending money responsibly and in a smart manner, because, you know, there's a lot of important key elements to Luzerne County that provides our residents between the prison, you know, elections, public defender, there's all different kinds of organizations that we fund, that we need to make sure that our residents are receiving the services they deserve. And one way to do that is to make sure we're partnering with all of our local communities, make sure we're working with our business leaders, making sure we're applying for grants and everywhere possible. So utilizing the resources and funding we have, especially with the funding issues at the federal and state government, we need to make sure that we're focusing on our finances and working for each and every one of these residents in Luzerne County.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
So I'm hearing a new prison that's going to cost anywhere from $400 million to approximately, what do we say, in triple that? And then we have infrastructure that we have to pay for, and we have to get our financial situation in order. But I would like to suggest that the biggest issue that we have is the biggest issue that we've had for my entire life. And the biggest issue that we have is that we have got to find a way to grow our tax base and to get good development in this area so that we can pay for all of that. Mr. Thornton is correct. He doesn't know where the money's going to come from. No one can tell you with a straight face that they do, because we have not thoroughly and correctly developed the area, and so I just believe that that is really the biggest thing we have to do in the next five years.
Thank you. Candidate Scarsella.
I believe, and I agree with a lot of my colleagues up here, that we do need a new prison. From what I do here, it's pretty bad, and it would cost a lot, but I do believe we have to find a way to not burden our taxpayers. That's a big thing, so we have to find, you know, create a plan and find different ways to bring money into the area, whether it be through different careers or something like that, but we need to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is candidate Lombardo.
Yeah, so I agree with some of the other candidates that said that our infrastructure is some of the, is one of the biggest issues that we face in Luzerne County. Aside from the prison, we have 306 bridges, 308 bridges, I think, and over 120 miles of roads, and that's a lot of infrastructure for us to take care of on top of the buildings that we own. And all of that, all of that money to repair those roads and bridges is going to come out of our taxpayer dollars if we don't figure out how to, how to raise, how to raise funds for that. So over the last couple of years, what we've been doing is, you know, using the creative talents of tax abatements, which the state government has allowed us to do in order to attract businesses and organizations into Luzerne County, and it's been very successful. I always talk about the Pittston Area School District and how they have done that, and they're one of the only school districts in the county that have not had to raise taxes in the last five years. We could get there in the next couple of years in Luzerne County, and as soon as we hit 2030, we'll have $26 million extra dollars that we'll be able to put towards our roads and bridges if we continue to pay off our debt. So infrastructure, I think, is the, is the biggest concern that we have right now.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
Yes, I'm going to reiterate that the biggest challenge right now, there are several, but roads, bridges, and infrastructure are, and the county has to run a tight belt right now because they've dispersed all of the ARPA money, and so that money's been designated. So any maintenance or other road and bridges or infrastructure issues that come up would come out of the budget, and hopefully, you know, if we run a tight ship, we get through to 2030 where there's more money available when the debt is paid off, that's what the county has to do right now, run a tight ship. The other, a couple of other things. I think that the residents' image of our local government needs to be, work on being improved, and there's a lack of vision for, or we need a comprehensive strategic plan for Luzerne County, instead of being reactionary, be proactive. Where do we want to go? Long-range plan with concrete plant, action plans, and target dates for getting there. And so I think that's, those are the three things I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Persia.
Yes, my experience being on Luzerne Borough, we had a plan for infrastructure. We had to do that every year. We always had a five-year plan to do the infrastructure, so I think that's one way of doing it. We have to have a plan, and we need to bring better jobs back into the area, like Chris said, and we got to keep them here. So to keep these people here, we got to build parks for the kids to play and stuff like that, so it's important that we have those ideas, and we got to work together. There's lots of ways we can do this prison. There's bond issues, there's other things that government can do. So we got to work together with everybody, and there's ideas out there. We can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Coslett.
Yes, as everybody has spoken about the prison, I am a retired 23-year correctional officer out of Luzerne County Correctional Facility, and I can tell you, it is a mess. But the problem being, nothing's ever been planned out to take care of that mess. They don't plan anything. Everything is reactionary, not proactive. So I think we need to take a proactive approach over the next five years with our bridges so they don't get shut down at the last minute. We know they're deteriorating. Let's get a plan. Let's be ready that when that bridge, when it's time, it can be shut down, another one is already on its way. We need to do that. We are going to have an extra $25 million. Thanks to the councils of the past, all the way up to today, they did a fantastic job managing our money to make sure this debt will be paid off in five years, but we can't spend $25 million a year looking for silly little things that aren't going to generate any money. We need to generate the money to replace this prison. We need to generate money to make sure our residents, our students, and our employees are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we move on to question number two, which is, can you provide examples of your leadership drawn from your personal experiences in which you led a diverse group of people to achieve an organization's objective? And we begin, this time around, with candidate Urban.
As far as leadership, I think, you know, it starts at home with your parents, and then as far as leadership in government, I mean, I'd say being elected as an official is leadership in itself, trying to direct individuals or at least get individuals to partake and compromise with you and your objectives to make the community better. I could tell you, one objective that I had was to remove your $5 registration fee years ago on your car vehicle registration, because I thought it was an unnecessary tax, especially after finding the county manager sort of misappropriating the money and spending it on his own without council approval at the time. So I had provided an ordinance and had it seconded, and we got it passed, removing that fee away from your vehicle registration. Other than that, it's just continuously being a leader every day, participate in your government, and there's many examples, but I would just say, keep, keep on moving forward.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
Well, my earliest thought of leadership started at about 19. Well, 18, actually. I joined the military with a delayed enlistment at 17 while I was still in high school. Then I moved on to basic training for the Air Force and was chosen to be a squad leader within the first two or three days of basic training. I was in charge of my squadron. There were about 10 ladies in my squadron area, and I was in charge of making sure that everyone followed all the rules, got everything done according to the way Uncle Sam wanted it, and I pulled us, my squadron, through to graduation. No one got turned back.
All right. Thank you. Next candidate, Wulovich.
As I stated earlier, I'm currently an Operations Manager at Wegmans Overnight. Anybody that's worked overnight shift knows is that the job of the overnight team is to make sure everything gets done so that the day is set up for success. That is exactly what we do. I lead a team of about 20 people, work together, we service different departments in the store. I mean, it's not just the grocery department, you know, we focus on produce and dairy and make sure everything's ready to go for the next day, and that's what I do on council as well. You know, we make sure that everything is set up for success. As I said, we need to have action plans, we need to have plans for the future, making sure that we're ready. We know what the next step is. So that way, come tomorrow, we're not struggling for success. We need success now. We need to make sure that we're working hard, we're working together and in unison, making sure that everybody's on the same page, and as a leader overnight, that is what I do. My job is to make sure everybody's on the same page, we're working towards the same goal, rowing in the same direction, and that's what I like to do on county council as well.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
So I believe what we're talking about is like, you know, how are you able to innovate when you have a diverse group of people, right? Innovation is something that I practice in my day-to-day. I am an innovator by definition, by trade, by training, and I'm a student of innovation. And I know that you have got to pull from your different strengths throughout your organization in order to get things done. I have launched care organizations, I have deployed, maintained, and customized AI tools within my organization, an entire platform, and to do that, you have to get buy-in, buy-in from everybody across the board, not just the people that agree with you, and you have to work together and understand when someone says to you, I don't quite agree, and how to get common understanding, a common language, and so I'm really good at that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Next is candidate Scarsella.
I work at Penn State Hazleton, and I work with our alumni, I work with donors, I work with faculty, I work with staff and students, and, you know, sometimes it's hard getting that whole group together, and I think you have to find a common ground and then move forward. So I believe I have, you know, that kind of magic that makes that work, and we make things happen there. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Next up is candidate Lombardo.
Yeah, so essentially, every day in my full-time job as a firefighter, there are opportunities to be a leader, whether you're the first guy on the hose line going into a burning building, whether you're the person that runs up to the grandmother that's having a heart attack and you're shouting out orders and telling your partners what to do, that's an opportunity to be a leader. I just had one of those experiences earlier today, so I've done that many, many times. But on county council, one thing that immediately comes to mind to me is, in the first year of our, of me being on council in 2022, it was a very tumultuous year. We had, we had a manager, a new manager hired, and then we had a manager leave, we had election problems, but during all that, we were able to pass our American Rescue Plan funding. We were able to get that done and give $55 million out to external organizations so we can help out communities within this county, and we were able to do, the other half of it was to help out with infrastructure projects within the county, and I'm so proud of that, and that was one thing that I spearheaded when I was part of, part of that.
Thank you. Next is candidate Williams.
Well, three things come to my mind in talking about working with a group of people to meet an objective. The first is when I coordinated religious education at St. Teresa's. It's one of the largest parishes in the diocese, so there were four... It's one of the largest parishes in the diocese. So, there were four to 600 youth that you're managing throughout the year. You're basically a principal of a program, and so you have teachers and parents and youth and all of that. So, and working through that. And actually, I'm proud to say, Chris Bellis was in my, I taught his seventh grade CCD class. And then, too, when I worked with Fair District's PA, helping that group work towards an independent citizen's redistricting commission, we did a lot of municipal resolutions and went to municipalities to get them to pass those with much success. And then, lastly, with the Board of Elections, as you know, it's a, it's a different, it's a group of Republicans and Democrats, and we're all working together and collaborating to move, and we were moving in the same direction to be, serve the best interest of all the residents of the county, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Perzia.
Yes, when I was in Luzerne Borough, we got a lot of our roads fixed. That's one big issue that was for our town. Also, we restarted our police department, and that's one of the hard things to do, to restart your police department. You have to start from scratch, and we did that. We had to work together as a group. And also, as a union president, to get a contract, you had to work with the school board and your own team. So, those are some of the big accomplishments I have done, and I think I can do that with the county, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Coslet.
Yes, in my younger days, I started out with the MJ Judge Monument Company as the foreman. If you look on the courthouse lawn, there is a very large Korean War memorial, which myself and the Korean War veterans designed and put up. I was the lead on that project. I took that from top to bottom. Then I started my career at the correctional facility. Now, for the first few years of my career, I kind of bounced around a little bit, but I ended up at the end of my career working in what we call central control, which is the brain of the jail. In there, you are in charge of the movement of over 500 inmates, usually 50 to 60 correctional officers at all times. You need to know where everybody is and what is going on. And I feel on county council, I can pretty much do the same thing, which is be a leader, have people, if they need to come to me, and I don't have the answer, I'll get it for them. I have no problem taking charge of that. I think we have many great leaders that will be on council, and I have, again, no problem finding the answers if I don't have them. I think that's leadership.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
You put in is working very well. Example of leadership, the first foremost comes to mind, in 2011, I was council president of West Pittston Borough. Our town was absolutely ravaged and devastated by the Sesquahanna River. Our town suffered the most severe consequences of that flood. Storm Lee came up, and the crest in West Pittston was higher than ever before, a foot and a half higher than the Agnes of '72, which I witnessed that also myself. So, I had to work, I had to call Red Cross, I had to call the National Guard. I got 30 National Guard troops there, three weeks staying in the Borough building. We had dark neighborhoods, no utilities for weeks. I had to work with UGI, PPNL, FEMA, PMA. 800 houses were flooded, 343 severely. We eventually had to demolish dozens of homes forever. We recovered eventually, and was one of the biggest things I've ever done in my life. That would be it.
Thank you so much. We now move on to question number three. Question number three is, do you support the Government Study Commission's proposal to revise the county's charter? And we'll begin with candidate Simmons.
I believe that the county council should remain at 11 seats. I think that it would be a fair distribution of ideas and powers throughout the county. So, I don't agree that it should be changed.
Thank you. Candidate Willovich.
On council, I originally voted against the Government Study Commission every time it was proposed, and it was for good reason. You know, it's a whole document. I think the residents shouldn't have to vote on one whole document. I believe that the residents should be voting on individual issues at individual times. You know, different issues affect the charter in different ways. We can go from 11 council members to seven. Okay, maybe we can put that in one separate question. We can put another question on saying, should we change the election board, which I tried doing and was unfortunately rejected by the election board. But I, we need to make sure that the residents have the final say in the charter. You shouldn't be voting on one whole document at the same time. We need to look at each issue individually and ask the residents, where do you want us to work on the charter? You know, it's, it's, it's hard when it's just a few people in a room, and then just throw it at them on election day and expect 20, 30-some thousand people to vote on an issue without even understanding the whole document. So, I think we need to break it down, break it down into simpler terms, and make sure that everybody has an equal say in what gets done with our charter.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
You want to see a show of bipartisanship? I agree with Greg. We spent $300,000 on a document that is now being presented to the people as an all-or-nothing. I don't like all-or-nothing in my life. I don't expect anyone out there to vote yes on this thing because you shouldn't like all-or-nothing on your life. Those are not the terms that you should be governed by. I'm sorry. But we did spend that $300,000, and we can take pieces of it and put it in front of you, you know, little by little, and let you vote on it, and then the people get to rule. That's what government is. It should be way more direct than what it, than what's being produced right now. So, I, I'm going to say no, and I hope that you all do, too.
Thank you. Candidate Skarsella.
I do not support the government study. I believe that they should keep council with 11 seats. It is a big county, and I think you need all minds together to make, you know, good decisions. The Hazleton Area School Board has nine members, and Hazleton is a lot smaller than the entire county, so I think 11 is a good fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lombardo.
Thank you. So, I was one of the members who supported the Government Study Commission in its current form, and I have been saying to people that it is one of the things that I regret voting for on county council. And I do feel like council at the time was sort of pigeonholed into doing that. There were things that we wanted to do. There are several issues with the charter we're very well aware of that we've seen involving the district attorney's office, involving the elections board, and delineation of power between the board and the bureau, and where that lies, and some other little administrative things. But about 85% of the charter works flawlessly. And, and I, you know, I feel that we probably could have done it piece by piece, having council pass ordinances that would have gone to the ballot, but we were finding a lot of difficulty with that. So, I supported the Government Study Commission, and I do just, I, I am, I'm a little disappointed with some of the things that have been, that have been passed there. And just, you know, I don't think the council should have the authority that they're giving them in some of these situations. So, I'm a little indifferent on it right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
No, I do not support the ballot question for three reasons. But first, I just want to mention to candidate Willovich that you can't change the structure of, from 11 to seven with an independent ballot question standalone. That change in structure to the government has to go to a Government Study Commission question, study. But three reasons why I don't, I'm against it is 11 to nine, more power in less hands is not good in our county. And I think it also gives more opportunity for people from our county to be on council and more representation. I don't agree with the clean slate for the controller or the DA. The first charter did not do that, and I don't know why the second Government Study Commission chose to give, offer a clean slate. And I don't agree with the Board of Elections being able to be changed, the makeup of it by a majority plus one of the council. I think that should always go to a ballot question to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Perzia.
I also, I don't support the study. It's working pretty well right now. The county's bringing the debt down. Everybody's working together on council. It's doing pretty well. And with Luzerne Borough, when I was there, we started off at nine council members, then we went down to seven, then went down to five. It's pretty hard to run a town with just five council members when most people have a day job. So, you need the 11 people that are on county council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Coslet.
Yes, I do not support the Government Study Commission question. I believe that you are taking nine council members. You are putting twice the workload on them. Mistakes will happen. I believe that there should be a forum, maybe once or twice a year for the public to come to. Tell us what your questions are. Tell us what you would like changed in the charter. Then we can begin to work on making it more friendly to the public, make it easier to understand for the public. Then we could put it on a ballot question. But until then, I think the public needs to speak for it. I think this was a study done where they took a lot of the issues and said, we'll just put it on council and have them figure it out, but we're going to take two of their people away. Not a really good way to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Thornton.
Thank you. The original charter was a great document. The framers did a great job putting that together. And however, there were a couple of flaws that we needed to address. We tried to address them the past four years. We were usually shut down by the Office of Law saying, that's a structural change. We can't do that. It has to go to a Government Study Commission. That's why we went in that direction. Overall, I think the new charter would work pretty well, but I still have some reservations about certain issues. I agree with Mr. Willovich that it's too bad we couldn't break that out for the public and maybe make three or four different ballot questions rather than one giant ballot question. But overall, I'd like to commend the Government Study Commission for all the hard work and time they put into it. And I think going down to nine members is, is a good thing because I'm sitting there with 11 members, and it gets very unwieldy. It really does. Sometimes it's hard to manage. But I agree, more representation, but the science says stop, so I'll stop.
Thank you. And we'll round out question three with candidate Urban.
I'm going to have to say a resounding yes. I mean, I served on the Government Study for Democrats and three Republicans. Two of those Democrats were from NAPA Action Together. It was easier to say no than to actually work as a cohesive bunch. Served with a couple of former county council members who understand what the county has gone through. Yes, initially, we were going from 11 to seven, and then we compromised, went back up to nine. I think it's for better and more efficient government. Where nobody's talked about that we're going to also have three public defender boards in the state, that we could put a public defender board in place. We could put a jail oversight board in place. So, incidents like Mr. Mackey's incident where we paid out $3 million of insurance money never happens again in this county. There are a whole multitude of issues that you need to look at. Also, expanding the amount of people that could serve on the authorities' boards and commissions, because right now, there's a lot of restrictions on ABCs, and those restrictions are lifted. So, I think you need to go back and look at the document before you say no on it. I'm going to say a positive yes, and, you know, everybody was welcome to come to our meetings, and I didn't see most of these people up here.
Thank you, and thank you all. We now move on to question number four, and it is a bit lengthy, so please bear with me. Do you believe that as a county council member, it is more important to maintain your personal position on major questions before council even if doing so leads to a stalemate on council, or to negotiate with other council members to reach a compromise that produces solutions even if the solutions aren't necessarily what you consider the best solutions? And we begin question number four with candidate Willovich.
I agree that it's an 11-member council. We have to work together. I mean, we all have our personal opinions, but we need to put them all on the table because when you have personal opinions, there might be things you don't think of. Need to look at both sides of the aisle, make sure we're all looking at the issue from different perspectives. You know, there's many ways to get to the right answer, you know, that we're not always going to be. You know, it's our way or the highway. You can't be that way on council. You know, I have personal views on many things. The RCO was one of them recently. What we did is we reached out to both organizations. We found ways to compromise. We found ways to work together to find an answer that worked. So, yes, I think that we need to make sure that we're working cohesively, working together, not afraid to pick up the phone and call council members, call people in the county, call business leaders. You know, we need many, many forms of input when we're making decisions. We can't make them on our own. It's not just a yes or no question. You know, at the end of the day, the vote is yes or no, but you need substantive context when you're making your decisions. And as a council member, I will always do that. I'm always going to work together with everybody.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
I'm a negotiate guy. Everything is a negotiation. I, I'm also an analyst. If I haven't already stated that, I might say it four or five more times because that's really who I am, okay? And I believe that you look at a situation, you look at all the people that you're negotiating with, and you do the best thing that you can for your neighbors, for your friends, for your family. But you have to negotiate, and, and you have to be honest about what a thing is and what it is not. And once you can do that, once you can look across the table from someone and negotiate and do it in good faith, then you're going to come up usually with the best answer. The other thing to remember is that if you come up with the wrong answer, you can always change it. That's the beauty of government. You negotiate, you do the best that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Skarsella is next.
I will always base my vote on the voices and the needs of my constituents. While I bring my own experiences to the table, my primary role is to represent the people who elected me. But I am a team player. I believe in negotiating and reaching the best solution for our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, candidate Lombardo.
Thank you. Yes, I agree with much of what's been said. Negotiation is a key to being on county council with 11 people. You know, every day in my job, I might be sitting at the dinner table with one of my partners, and we might get into an argument about something. But I know at the end of the day that I have to have his back, and he has to have my back. So, I kind of feel the same way on county council, that I want all of us to be able to have each other's back when we go out there, even if we don't agree. And, and we have done a lot of that negotiation. You know, one of the, one of the first things that comes to mind to me is the budget that we had to negotiate in 2022 with our new county manager who proposed a 7% tax increase. We worked together, both Democrats and Republicans, and I was very proud to vote for that budget because I know where I personally made cuts. I know where Mr. Willovich made cuts. I know where Mr. McGinley made cuts, and I know that we worked very hard on that budget. So, I was very proud to do that. And I know Mr. Willovich also mentioned the RCO. That was a document that I was also very proud to be able to work on and bring forth to the county because it was something that there was a lot of compromises on.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
Yes, I'll reiterate what most, everybody is saying. Working together, listening, researching, negotiating, collaborating are all things that are really requirements of being a county council member. And as candidate Skarsella said, we really, you really need to be thinking about what is the best interest of the residents, all the residents of the county, and, and that's the common denominator. So, I will always work to negotiate and collaborate and work together with the other council members to come to, come together. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Perzia.
Okay, what you need to do is listen to the persons that are talking. Try to get the facts straight. And then, you might get the right answer as you go around the table like we go around the table here talking. Well, you do the same thing in a meeting. You discuss everything. You talk about the facts. And sometimes the person that you don't think that you like too much, he's the one who comes up with the brilliant answer. And that's, was the beauty of government because you get along, and you don't get along, but you do it for the people. We're not doing it for any party. You got to work for the people, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. And we come to the left here with candidate Coslet.
Yes, I believe at the end of the day, you have 11 people at that table. And I believe once you're at that table, you have to look at it as, they're fellow residents. Democrat, Republican, kind of goes off the table a little bit when it comes to the running of the county. And you have to help these people. They have to help you. You have to work together. You have to be bipartisan. At the end of the day, we're elected by you. We're not up there because we elected us. We're up there because you elected us. So, we have to do what's best for you, and in order to do that, we have to be able to work together. So, I believe that communication is very big in this area. I believe you have to sit down, talk out the issue with everybody at that table, come up with the best possible answer that not only will make everything better for the residents, but it also keeps county council running smoothly.
Thank you very much. Candidate Thornton.
Thank you. Absolutely, compromise is the better method with any kind of dispute or disagreement. Just look at where our federal government is. We're going to shut down the government this week because they can't compromise. They won't even talk. They won't even meet with each other. The state, similar story, not as severe as the federal government. Shouldn't happen in the county, and it doesn't. In my four short years there, we've worked very well. In my four short years there, we've worked very well together. As I recently knock on doors, asking for people's vote on November 4th, some of the Democrats that answered the door asked me, are you a Democrat or Republican? And I say, well, I'm a Republican. But quite honestly, we don't have Democrat and Republican issues on county council. At least we shouldn't, not with the issues that we're facing. So I'm always asking, will this thing that we're negotiating, will it benefit most of the people of the county or just a small special interest portion? And I like to verify when my colleagues disagree, are they being influenced by special interests or is it truly in their heart? Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Urban.
I would have to say, you know, compromise is one thing, but picking up the phone and calling people, if you call a majority of the folks, it's really not being transparent. I mean, the Home Rule Charter was meant to be a very transparent and open government. Our job on county council, or at least when I was on county council, is provide oversight of the budget. The day-to-day operations is run by the county manager. The hiring and firing of people and staff is run by the manager. The only thing county council does is, you know, confirm division heads. Now, you have to have a good working relationship with those division heads and those individuals. But at the end of the day, there's really not much else that county council does besides, like, you know, appoint people from authorities, boards and commissions, provide budget oversight. Every now and then, yes, you can propose some changes to ordinances like planning and development and tax breaks, LERTAs and things like that. But overall, the county manager is who runs the day-to-day operations of the county, and we provide the oversight.
Thank you. And we will round out question number four with candidate Simmons.
Well, being a veteran, I come from a place of leave no man behind. I come from a place of communication, from a place of negotiation. And when you're in a room with various people from different parts of life, different parts of the county, you need to be able to have open communication, open dialogue, and work together to better the county and to work for the people that voted for us. So yes, I would absolutely be open and willing to work with anyone across the board.
Alrighty, thank you so much. Let's move on to question number five, which is Luzerne County has 76 municipalities, four cities, 36 boroughs and 36 townships. How would you, as a councilperson, stay informed about the needs of every municipality? And we will begin with candidate Bellis.
Can I start by saying I am so glad that you were not going to ask me to name all 76 municipalities?
I'm glad you didn't ask me that either.
Look, this is about relationships. I'm good at maintaining them, good at answering the phone. I crisscross the county several times, sometimes in a week, sometimes in a day. My campaign manager is in the audience, and he'll confirm that he's been on the road with me and he's experienced it. Sometimes it's hectic, but you have to maintain good relationships with people, you have to hear them, and you have to have empathy for them. But more than that, you have to understand where everybody's coming from, and so I would commit to doing that absolutely on council.
Thank you. Candidate Scarsella.
Well, this is definitely a big county. But I think the best way to understand my constituents is to stay connected with them and maintain open communication. I would attend like local events and engage in the community rather than waiting for them to come to me. And I would just reach out to maybe local leaders and business owners and understand what really matters to them. Thank you.
I thank you. Candidate Lombardo.
Yeah, so this was something that I learned very quickly when I was, when I was first elected to county council, that Luzerne County, aside from campaigning in it, it is a very massive county. And not just every municipality, but every region of the county has different needs and different desires. So, you know, I've been really proud. One of the things I think we've done really well on county council is collaborate with our municipalities and with the different regions of the county to see what they want, see what they need, and how we as the county can help them, because we certainly have a lot of resources. And we have a lot of resources within the municipalities and the different regions that we can utilize to make life better for the residents of that area. And, you know, like I said, it is sort of different. You know, I try to make decisions when voting on council as though I live in the municipality that it's going to be affected by. I don't want anyone to ever say that, you know, I'm only voting a certain way because I live in said municipality, or I'm friends with somebody who lives in that municipality. I always try to make sure that I'm supporting every municipality in Luzerne County exactly the same way that I would any other one.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
Well, three things. I would, I keep up on the news, I follow what's going on. If there's something that comes up that's a concern, like the Dorance Township, when they were having a meeting with their zoning, I went, I sat in on it, I listened, I heard what the residents were saying to the zoning chairperson in their committee. So I'll stay involved, being open and receptive. I always want people to feel that they could reach out to me, whether it's a member of a municipality, a board of supervisors, or a citizen. And lastly, knocking on doors, I've been all over the county and I love it. And I've talked about this, and I really want to do this, that I don't think it should just be limited to those who are campaigning. But I think that council members should consider, at least once a month, knocking on doors and saying, hey, I'm on county council, how do you think we're doing? And staying connected with those people in the communities. Thank you.
I thank you. Next is candidate Perzia.
I can't believe you asked this question. I was campaigning Tuesday around the Jewish holiday, and I was passing out a card to a gentleman, then his little child asked me this question, how many towns are in the county? I wish I knew these answers. I would have gave it to him. But he was, but I tried to answer them honestly as best I could. And so the thing is, you know, you have to listen, and I'm there for whoever needs me. And that's my answer.
Thank you so much. Next is candidate Coslet.
Yes, I think the best way to stay connected is pick up the phone, talk to the mayors of these towns, talk to their council members, see what their needs are. I think it's almost impossible to say that you can meet with these people every month. There's, it is a gigantic county, as was mentioned. But I believe you have to make phone calls, you have to stay in touch with these people, you have to stay in touch with the residents in that community. You have to be available for them if they need you, and you have to be able to pick up the phone and reach out to them as well. And also, for some people that don't know, my brother is the mayor of a municipality, and I would abstain from voting on anything in that municipality due to that, so there is no gray area. But you do have to stay in touch, you have to communicate with these people, you have to let them know when your meetings are, you have to reach out to them. When they need you at a meeting, you need to go to their meeting. So it's just, I think, a back and forth with good communication opens up a lot of avenues for those municipalities, for the county to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Thank you. Well, one thing I do is I regularly attend the five or six Republican district meetings. And I attend those because I hear a lot of residents who come to those meetings from all over the county, talk about what's important. I would go to the Democrat district meetings, but I haven't been invited yet. But anyway, I do attend, as some of us do, Greg and John, we attend regularly the quarterly Wright Township Business and Public Officials Luncheon. That's very helpful. Three or four towns gather for that luncheon. We learn a lot, what's going on. I always attend church picnics and firemen's picnics all over the county. I don't know anybody, I just walk in, and I always wear my name tag. And that way, people come right up to me and ask me questions directly, which they have. Unfortunately, I pack on a lot of pounds in the summer with the potato pancakes, sausage and pepper sandwiches. I can't, I can't stay away from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Urban.
I would say Luzerne County is a big county. I think, let's keep it in scope, though municipalities have their own form of government, they are responsible for their own areas. If they need something from the county, they can obviously pick up the phone, call the county manager or the head of council, and then they would relay that message to us on what they might need. The only thing I can, that really comes to my mind are redevelopment dollars, when they need a park, or if they need a particular, like in Wokesbury's case, need to fix the sewer lines, they came to the county and borrowed some money from the county. In those cases, you want to partner up with your municipalities, but as a rule, the county is not, you know, your local police force. We have different services that are different from the municipalities and municipal government. I mean, we pretty much manage, you know, the dollars for the courthouse system, human services, mental health, senior services, children and youth. Those are the core functions of the county, plus, you know, like the clerk of courts and criminal records and pro bono, which are civil records. We have the sheriff's department, you know, to make sure that we can transport prisoners in a proper manner and within budget. And I see it says stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
So beyond campaigning, I'm a Realtor. I'm an active Realtor in not just Luzerne County, but also Monroe County, Lackawanna County, several counties. So I, I'm big on accessibility, I'm big on transparency, I'm big on just being available for the residents that vote for me to be able to speak to me and have one-on-one, let me understand what their complaints and their problems are, so then I can move on to council and share that with the rest of the council so that we can really work for the people that vote for us.
Thank you. And candidate Wolovich will round out question number five.
Thank you. Aside from this wonderful forum, they also provided us a government directory for 2025. In here, there is 10 state representatives that we can talk to. We have two, well, actually, sorry, four senators and six state house members. Now, these people interact with constituents on a daily basis, they hear all the problems. A lot of those problems aren't state problems, they're county problems. So if you have constant communication with your state representatives and your state senators, you can get information from them that can help you make decisions, that can help you see what's going on in those municipalities. In my first campaign, I mean, I have a picture in front of buildings and meeting at different halls in each of these 76 municipalities. I make the effort to go out and make sure we're reaching out to these officials, going to town meetings, going even school board meetings. You know, there's so many different issues that can come up at these meetings that some of us will miss out on completely. So we need to make sure that we're reaching out to local town representatives. These, I mean, they're elected too. You know, the people in this room, they vote for their own officials in each town. Now, they would know their concerns. If there's an issue that comes up in a council meeting, I make sure to talk to those representatives, make sure we're making communication, we're reaching out, picking up the phone or visiting, and that's what we do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will now move on to question number six. As a council member, what do you think are three things that council, as a body, must do to improve county government? And we will begin with candidate Scarsella.
I believe responsible leadership would be number one, fiscal accountability, and community values. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is candidate Lombardo.
So I think that the number one thing that we need to do in order to improve our county government is make sure that we're collaborating. I know we talked a lot about this tonight, but one of the things that we, I think, have kind of glossed over is the fact that council is just one of the three branches of government. And the two that interact the most are council and the administration. We need to make sure that we're collaborating with our administration as much as possible so that their goals are achieved and our goals are achieved, and it's a symbiotic relationship. There have been times when council has not gotten along with the administration, there's been times when the administration has not gotten along with council. Right now, we don't have that problem. I'm very proud of the work that we've done together with our manager, Ramil De Crocamo. And I think that two other things that we can be doing are, obviously, working on the budget. We work on it very hard every year, every single member of council contributes. And just, you know, having open lines of communication with the public. I know as Chair of Council, I try to make sure that I'm respectful and honor their wishes, honor their time, especially if like their time is up and they want a couple more seconds. I always try to give them that extra couple seconds because that's the easiest way to get somebody angry at you. So I try to give them a couple extra seconds, but thank you.
And I thank you. We now move on to candidate Williams.
My priorities for the improvement of county council are to promote long-term economic growth by focusing on economic development, conducting strategic financial planning, and pursuing a positive public image for the county. Budget monitoring, management, and continuing to run a tight ship until the debt is paid down. Monthly status reports on infrastructure upgrades and maintenance included in county meeting agendas. I'd like to see a county manager minute included in each county council meeting so that the county manager gives public update on happenings in the past two weeks, priorities for the next two, short and long-term goals. And also, I'd like to see the securing of a consultant for the creation of a comprehensive, long-range visionary plan, a master plan, Commission for Luzerne County 2040. And that would include community stakeholders and experts. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Perzia.
Yes, I believe transparency is one of them. In other words, when the budget is done, to go over all the items in the budget. Also for the taxpayers, I think we need to do as much as we can to help our taxpayers get the most out of our government and to govern. Governing is an everyday thing. Governing, governing means to get together, get the ideas together, and move the county forward in how you want to raise the money, how you're going to spend the money. And also to make sure that everyone gets along with their ideas, there's no fighting. If you're fighting, you're not going to get anything done. You have to work together and do the compromise, and that's what government is. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Coslet.
Well, I think first off, the council needs to be more proactive than reactive. I think that needs to change a little bit. I think on the infrastructure, definitely more proactive. I think we need long-range planning as far as budgets goes for the infrastructure projects. As they said in 2030, we will have an extra 25 million. By 2028, we should know what we're going to do with that. We need more communication with the voters and the municipalities to make sure we are doing everything that they need to make their lives a little bit easier, a little bit better. I think the county as a whole, right now, it would seem to me that council does get along well. They do work together, and I think that needs to continue and grow a little bit more. But I think for the most part, once you have that communication, you have that long-range planning, I think then you have a guide for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Yeah, three things. One is, as Mr. Lombardo stated, collaboration, that's just not a big word, that's hard to pronounce, but it actually means working with all facets of government. We, on a weekly call, John and I, Chair and Vice Chair, we have all the administration, seven or eight or nine people on a Zoom call, talking about the important things of the county that we need to put on the agenda. That happens through communication. Second thing is cooperation, and I'm going to put no blind sides. The worst thing that could happen in public council meetings is a gotcha type issue. You know, people, some council members might have something, they could have raised four days earlier, called somebody and got answers, but they want to put people on the spot. So what I ask is have civility, respect for people, treat everybody with respect. The last thing, of course, is transparency. We have a lot of committees in the county, and we open everyone up to the public and we advertise them to the public.
I thank you. Candidate Urban.
I would say, you know, first and foremost, collaboration with the executive branch to provide a vision, you know, for the county in the foreseeable future. I think currently, council doesn't really do a good job of that. Thus, you know, I'd go back and say, there's a reason why we have that Government Study Commission, is to give back more power to the county council, to be your representative form of government, to be the leaders that they need to be, and put more responsibility in county council to lead, and not the county manager to kind of lead county council to a vote. Improve election process, that's your foundation of good government, to make sure that that elections office is always running well, like a well-oiled machine. I'm going to go back and say the Government Study Commission currently is keeping the structure the same, but allows county council in the future to change that structure if it doesn't work. If you guys keep the current structure, you're going to need another Government Study Commission to change in the future. And lastly, fiscal responsibility, council is the oversight board of the county budget to make sure that the executive and the judiciary branches of government are spending within their means and not providing the unions with all kinds of exorbitant raises.
Thank you. Next is candidate Simmons.
Well, I have four. I'm going to say collaboration, communication, proactive government, and transparency to the residents. First, with collaboration, we all need to be able to collaborate. to collaborate with the various municipalities, the various mayors and other elected officials to come together and work best for our county residents. Same thing with the communication. As far as proactive government, I do believe that we need to look ahead and not wait for the problem. We can, we can sizably see what a problem is as it's coming, and then be ready to address it before it actually falls apart. And as far as transparency to residents, the residents should know and see exactly what government is doing, because they elected us to do it, and we should be working on their behalf. Thank you.
I thank you. Candidate Wilovich.
As most people have said, it's all about communication. You know, communication amongst council members. Make sure we're working together, working on committees, having difficult conversations when we need to have difficult conversations. There's been times on council where some people just don't agree, and they don't want to talk together at all. We need to make sure that we're getting away from that, get back to working together. Communication with local officials. Make sure we're reaching out to our towns, cities, boroughs. They have a lot of information that we may need to make these decisions. They may have information that we don't have. There may be concerns that they have that we need to bring to the table. We need to make sure that our municipalities, again, there's 76, there's a lot of them, but they have a lot of concerns and a lot of issues that we may need to talk about in the future. I know there's been littering ordinances in certain townships, there's zoning problems in other townships. We need to make sure that they're all on the table. And again, communication with our federal officials, making sure we're talking to our state representatives, our federal representatives, our congressmen and our senators, and make sure we're talking to the governor, everybody along the lines, making sure that we're reaching out to all of our resources. Because again, it's collaboration, working together on all levels, from constituents all the way up to the federal government, making sure we're all on the same page and working towards the common goals, which is the best outcome for Luzerne County.
Thank you. And to round out question number six, candidate Bellis.
So what a lot of people are talking about is communication and transparency, and that is all part of what is known to me as an innovative framework. It includes all of that stuff. And so we need to innovate. We need to innovate our county. Specifically, we need to innovate our economy. We have to find ways to put more money in people's pockets that would be vis-à-vis better jobs, keeping taxes low. And we still need to make sure that Luzerne County feels like home. Second, we need to grow our tax base so that we can, and I will return to the roads and infrastructure, and also the, what is it now, $2 billion prison that we don't know how to pay for. We have to grow our tax base in order to do that. And finally, we need to align our government to prevent waste and plan for the future.
Thank you. We'll move on to question number seven, which is, how can the county reduce vacancies and improve retention for staff positions in the government, particularly children and youth, 911, and the election bureau? And we will begin with candidate Lombardo.
So I think that's a three-fold answer. Number one is to pay our county employees what they deserve to make. As a council member, I have always fought for our employees, and I've always tried to balance that with the needs of the taxpayers. But the problem is, if we're not paying our employees enough, then they won't be there, and they won't be able to serve the taxpayers. So we need to make sure that we're paying them enough. Number two, we need to make sure we have stable government. We need to make sure that we have administrators that are in positions that have knowledge, that have experience and skills, which I think we've done a very good job over the last two to three years, particularly under the, under the command of our county manager, Ramilda Crocamo. We've been hiring some great people, and they've been really effective. And number three, county council needs to stay out of the way of the day-to-day operations of the county itself. We work on the budget. We do high-level things. We do not manage our employees day to day. So we should not make them feel like they're under the gun every time that one of us walks into one of our buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Williams is next.
Yeah, this is something I heard door knocking. I heard a conversation from someone who works in the county, and this was their main concern, was filling the vacancies in children and youth, and shared this with me. And it was shortly after a terrible tragedy that happened to a young boy down in the southern part of the county. And I remember that day thinking that is such a priority right now, is getting those vacancies filled for the youth in our county and the families in our county, whether it's creative marketing, but whatever it takes, and working in collaboration with the county manager to help with that. But I think that needs a full court press, because we have to look out for the children in our county. And whatever way we can do it, we have to do it. It would mean brainstorming, working together as council members, and I encourage them to do that now, the council that's in place, to start thinking about how can they help the administration in what ways, what creative ways to do that marketing to increase, decrease the vacancies. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Perzia.
Thank you. Vacancies are important, because you need people to do the job, especially for the children and youth. That's our treasures. We got to worry about our kids. And if there's not enough help there, that's on the county. We need to get people in there. But they got to be qualified people. We just don't get anybody. So you got to make sure we have the right people in place. And I think that's how the county council should look at that matter. Make sure they have the people, I don't know if they're unionized or not, but if there's a union, they could help out with it also, because they want good workers there. They don't want them to give the unions a bad name. But whoever's in there doing that, it's so important, because there's a lot of children that are in trouble today. So I would definitely make that a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now move to our audience's left with candidate Coslet.
Yes, it's, it's simple. Pay people what they deserve. Pay them for the job they do. Right now, a lot of the county positions don't pay well. You can't raise a family off of them, to be honest with you. So you need to revisit your budget. You need to make sure that we are paying them their value. You have to pay them what the market value is, what they're worth. Some people do an excellent job and aren't paid nearly what they should be for their value. We also do have some departments in the county where the supervisors have never done the job that they're telling their subordinates to do. So how do you go to your supervisor and say, hey, I have an issue with this? And he says, well, you're going to handle it this way, but yet he's never done the job. So there are several departments in this county that suffer from that. So I believe, pay them what they're worth, value them, and give them supervision that know how to do their job as well. They'll take pride in it. They'll stick around.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Yeah, a few things come to mind. I learned in the corporate world that employees don't just show up to work every day just for a dollar, to earn a buck. That's one major reason. But people desire recognition. And your best employees work better when they're recognized for the good job they do. And I think we've done a great job. I think our county manager does a great job with that. She sends out emails to all of us praising when someone went above and beyond, especially to 911 center. And we, as council persons, I always respond to the employee and thank them. We need to come out and stop the toxic insults and berating of employees. When someone messes up, makes a mistake, we sometimes go overboard, and that needs to stop. Children and youth is a very stressful job, as is 911. We're experiencing the same thing other counties are experiencing. So stressful that people just finally quit. They can't take it anymore. So, oh, stop S D O P. Okay.
Thank you. And we move to candidate Urban next.
I think you, it's a little bit of a twofold answer. One, you have to put better technology in place to make government more efficient. Two, you have to probably go back and revisit the qualifications for those jobs and the job descriptions. And well, maybe actually, third, is to reopen some of the union contracts. But you've got to be careful, because you have a county budget which is finite. You know, without blowing it up and raising taxes on the county taxpayer, you got to look at each one of these items separately. I think we have a mental health care crisis in this county. I could tell you from a fact, there's over 18,000 people that are served at the Children's Service Center on Franklin Street, probably, you know, thousands over at the Wright Center. And if we don't take care of the youth and those with mental health conditions, they're going to be ending up in the prison that's going to cost $2 billion. But I think if we can nip the butt early, you're not going to have to have that prison of $2 billion. Maybe you can make it a little bit smaller. As far as elections, you got to hire qualified people. You know, the county manager has to hire that person, bring that person to council, and we need to provide a good pay structure for them.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
I think a few things. Michael Coleman. I think a few things we could do. We can open the pool for more diverse employment talents. That would bring in more people that are actually qualified to do the jobs, and then pay the people what they're worth and what they're qualified for. And also add in solid benefits, because these talented people are going to come with their families. These talented people have children and wives and spouses that require backup also. So I think those are two main things. And finally, morale. You need to increase the morale of the employees of the county, because sometimes they feel unrecognized.
Thank you. Candidate Wilovich.
Yes, coming from a company that prides itself on customer service, which is what the county needs to be providing its residents, you need a happy, productive workforce. In order to do that, we need to make sure we're paying our people competitive wages, make sure that they're making a living. Sometimes people come to the county just as a jumping stone to get to the state, because you're going to get paid who knows how much more. We need to make sure we're focusing on our people in the county, make sure they're giving them what they deserve. Also, good management. Another thing we pride ourselves on at Wegmans is good management. We need people in there who, like they said earlier, we need to make sure that they understand the job that people are doing. At Wegmans, I started on a cash register at 15, and now I'm a whole department manager. You know, you need to work your way in through the system, make sure you're working your way, learning, giving good training exercises, making sure people are educated. You know, it's all about the people and how they are treated in their workplaces, and that's what we need to focus on.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
All right. So I too come from the private sector, and I can tell you from experience that if you pay fair wages and provide employees with upward momentum and a good environment to work in, that you get better workers, you get a better job done, you have more efficiency in your organization, and you really do save money in the long run. It costs a ton of money to find and recruit and hire somebody, and you, if you lose them, that's such a waste. Now, I will also tell you, and please, nobody clutch their pearls, that I agree with Steve Urban here. Children and youth is one of the best ways to prevent future prisoners, but it also creates better citizens. And we have to pay those people well. And by the way, I think with the rate of inflation in the room, that we're up to a $5 billion prison.
Thank you. And rounding out question number seven is candidate Scarsella.
I agree with most of my constituents up here that we do need to pay people what they are worth. I was surprised when I was looking one time at what some of the county workers were paid, and I find that they, they're low wages. Maybe that whole, that whole area needs to be revamped with incentives possibly. And children and youth, really, the youth is our most precious asset. So I think we need to protect them and have people that really do care about them. So we need to keep these individuals there for a long time. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Let's move on now to question number eight. What more can council do to continue to ensure that all county elections are fair, efficient, accurate, and legally conducted? And we begin with candidate Williams.
Well, thank you for that question. I appreciate that. Being the former chair of the Board of Elections, first I'd say to the county council, the county council is not the Board of Elections. And so somebody mentioned earlier about staying out of the way of whatever entity. And I would say, support, affirm the county manager, the administration in what the election bureau is doing. They need support. They're on good standing. They're on good ground now. It's taken a few years to get where they are. And so to support that, affirm that, support them in any way they can, the county manager, and also not to bash them or shed a negative light on them. There was a period of time when it seemed like a lot of that was going on. And I think that got out into the public in the image of elections. It fueled a negative narrative, and I just think to stay away from that. And that's what I would ask. Thank you.
Thank you. We move on to candidate Perzia.
Thank you for the question. For fair elections, I would make sure that there's enough funding for it. Make sure everybody was trained the right way, and have a watchdog over everything. That's, that's all I would do. Make sure that it's fair and watched. Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. Candidate Coslet.
I think if the council wants to oversee the elections to make sure they're fair and all that, you need to appoint a council member as a liaison. And I think you need to make sure that everything is planned out accordingly. Weeks before the election, you need to make sure you have enough ballots, you have enough paper, you have enough people, they are trained correctly. You have to make sure that you have your solicitor on standby for election day to make sure if any issues occur, it is handled immediately. You have to make sure the sheriff's department is in place if they need to go to a polling place, and make sure that the election is being carried out fair. So I think, once you do all those things, I think you'll have a pretty good election on your hands. This last primary, I don't believe we heard anything, any major issues with the election itself on primary day. So I think we're moving ahead in the county. I think it's on good standing right now. But I think you need to continue it, make sure those safeguards are in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Yeah, thank you. We've taken great steps and strides in the last three years with improving our election bureau. One is our county manager, Ms. Crocamo. She created an exhaustive, exhaustive task and checklist with time constraints for each item to be completed. This list goes on and on and on, dozens and dozens of items, and it's adhered to, and they're drilled down on it. That helped a lot in the last couple of elections. We just recently voted to go with paper ballots. That's going to help a lot. There's no more confusion with computers breaking down, this and that with the suspicions of computer programs and things like that. So the paper ballots are going to be a big, big help. Lastly, remove anything that causes great suspicion. More than half of the county voters feel drop boxes are a bad way to go. And they've been abused over and over in the past, and I think we should get rid of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Urban.
I believe you need to provide more oversight in that elections office. And one way to do it, unfortunately, the election board controls all things elections, and county council can't really get involved in that except for funding and the budget. But you need oversight in that office. Imagine mail-in ballots coming in, and I'm going to be a conspiracy theorist, and say that those mail-in ballots are flooding into the county office in the bureau. And you have a director that possibly will direct an underling to say, hey, don't process them. Just put them in a corner, because we can't handle them all. You know, just if a constituent or a voter calls in, blame it on the post office that it didn't get delivered. You know, wait till the person calls, and then we'll deal with it later. So I think, you know, that could be a problem with mail-in ballots and absentee ballots that nobody's really thinking about. I think, like I said, you know, the government study commission, we took great strides into trying to fix this in the future, and that's one reason why I'm telling you, please support the future charter.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
I agree with Mr. Thornton, actually, that we should trust the work and leadership of Ramilda Crocamo. I think that's how you say her last name. I don't want to butcher it. But our county manager, she put a lot of work in trying to organize how elections are done. Also, I believe that we should train all volunteers and everyone that's involved with the voting process. I had a resident tell me as she was volunteering for elections previously and during the primaries, that she was kind of attacked by some of the other poll worker volunteers that were there. And so it made her feel unwelcome. And so that's something also that we should really pay attention to for voting. Thank you.
I thank you. Candidate Wilovich.
Again, as council members, there's very little we can do to impact elections, except providing resources. You know, we're the budgetary arm of the government. We need to make sure that elections is funded properly. You know, they have the resources they need to make sure they have the paper and the machines and everything you need to run a successful election. You know, we appoint the board members. You know, the board members need to work hard, making sure they're making the tough decisions. There's many decisions that come up. Recently, most with the appointment of people to the ballot in Pittston, you know, maybe they should have worked. I don't know what exactly happened in that situation. It was a weird circumstance. a weird circumstance. But you know, as council, again, as council members, there's very little we have to do except provide support, resources, and everything we need to the elections bureau and board.
Thank you. We will move on to candidate Bellis.
Thank you. I think that Councilman Thornton touched on a point earlier when he called out what's going on with the federal government, and it really hits here. The government's shutting down because we have essentially 435 children that are running it. Well, our local elections are run by a board, and you have to make sure that you have good people on the board, people that you can trust to take care of the elections. And so not having, you know, a board with children and having a board with adults that will take care of that goes a long way. When something happens, we need transparency over everything, and one example of something that recently happened was there was a request for tapes, and it was a huge distraction when the county did not turn them over. I believe that from day one, as soon as that request came in, they should have just given it. Be transparent. That's the whole key to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Scarsella.
As for election integrity, I do support the paper ballots and the photo ID. I believe we need more transparency and oversight at the polls. As for the mail-in ballots, I actually prefer the absentee ballots, you know, that we had in the past. And if I could do anything, I would want Election Day to be a holiday so everybody could get out to vote, then we wouldn't need mail-in ballots. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. And we'll round out this question with candidate Lombardo.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think we need to make sure we're facilitating good elections to happen by having qualified people operating in the bureau. And by doing that, you know, we need to make sure we have good administrators that are overseeing them in operations, in administrative services, and of course, in the county manager's office. In 2022, when we had the paper shortage, there was a lack of oversight because of a lack of administrative oversight. We need to make sure that we have processes in place, and the county manager, and the elections director, and the administrative services director are working on that right now. They have a fantastic plan in place, and I encourage anybody to go check it out because I believe it's public and you can go see it. I supported recently the resolution to switch to paper ballots and create a, have a new set of election machines, which is going to save the county a ton of money and save us a bunch of work on the front end and the back end. And finally, I think we need to make sure that we're talking with our legislators who can fix our elections code, because there are things in the state elections code that are confusing. People mention drop boxes. Well, they're not codified in the elections code. I don't know what your opinion is, I don't really care. I think that they should just codify whatever it is it should be, so that we have a little bit more clear understanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that rounds out that question. I am told that we have time for one question more from the audience, and I randomly picked up one of the questions that has been written down on the card. So here it is. The southern end of our county has thrived on its agricultural heritage. Do you feel it's acceptable to let big tech, big data, take land and dictate the future of our heartland? And we will begin with candidate Perziah.
Thank you for the question. First of all, we have to look to see what conditions that would affect the agriculture. We need to do a study on it, and we do need to bring jobs into the area. We got to grow the county. So we have to be very careful what we do, but we can't close our eyes. So we all got to work together, get our facts together, and look at every aspect of it. And then I think we can move forward and bring everybody along. I'm in favor of going forward, but we got to make sure everything is okay with everything. It's not only the county, you got municipalities to deal with, the state, and the federal government. So it's just not the county. So we got to get all those things together and work, and work on that, and all the council members also, and those other areas like the townships and the state and federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. And we move to candidate Coslet.
Absolutely not. If we need data centers, we have the space for industrial parks, put them there. Nobody's land should be invaded, nobody's homes should be invaded, nobody's property should be taken for data centers or industrial, industrialization, let's say. I believe your, the people in Sugarloaf have this issue right now with PP&amp;L. PP&amp;L seems to say, this is what we're going to do whether you like it or not. I'm not really sure how we fight that, but I think in a collaborative effort, we can fight that. Your homes should not be taken over by businesses. Your communities should not be taken over by big business. They make, we have plenty of space for industrial parks, we have plenty of industrial parks right now with space in them. Put them there. Don't take our houses, our farms, our communities away for industrialization. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Yes, I love agriculture, I love farms, I love farming, they grow our food. Believe me, nobody enjoys food more than I do. So I don't want to see that go away in the county. I agree with Mr. Coslet. I am not a fan of eminent domain and taking people's land and farms. If it was my farm, I would never want that. And there most likely is ample land owned by these developers in the old coal scarred mines, land from the mines developments that are existing there now. AI is here to stay around the world. It's here, you can't say we don't want AI, it's come. There's not much you can do above that, especially the county level. We don't own much land in the county, so we cannot dictate to townships or municipalities how they should govern their land or the people themselves. But no, I'm all for agriculture.
Thank you. Candidate Urban.
I will say I am pro-agriculture. I will also say that I'm a pro-tech guy. At the same time, I think you need to compromise. I mean, it's up to those individual landowners whether or not they want to deal with PP&amp;L or whoever wants to come in on their property. If they, you know, dollars talk, they're allowed to sell. But I think, you know, what we need to realize is that entities like PP&amp;L can go underground. They don't have to traverse the skies with high-powered lines. They can go in conduit and use multidirectional drill bits to go underground, so it's not as sort of negative as we all make it out to be. I mean, we know that data centers are going to be around and for the foreseeable future, you're probably going to need even more power plants, possibly more nuclear power plants as well, with cryptocurrency and artificial intelligence. So I think, you know, this is one of these issues where I think let's work a little bit smarter, have some additional dialogue, and let's go underground with it instead of aerial.
Thank you. Next is candidate Simmons.
I agree with Mr. Urban. I do believe that PP&amp;L and some of the other power companies, they can go underground and not encroach upon people's properties where they raise their families, where children can be susceptible to various health issues because of these growing spaces for electrician, electricity and data. We can't escape data and the future. This is what the future is, but there has to be some way that we can compromise between the energy companies, data centers, and families that live in these properties so that we can continue to grow safe agriculture and have our children grow in safe, happy environments without worrying about developing some kind of health issue later on in life.
Thank you. Candidate Wulovich.
Yes, Southern Luzerne County is probably one of the more beautiful areas of Luzerne County. I'm down there a lot through Butler Township and Hollenback and all those places. You know, it's a very beautiful area. You know, there's areas designated for business and for economic development. We need to focus on those areas. You got to stay away from the farmlands. I encourage them to work with Farmland Preservation and Conservation District, making sure those areas are protected from other places that want to take them over. You know, eminent domain is a terrible thing in certain, in many circumstances, especially when you're encroaching upon beautiful farmland. Anywhere down there, you know, you could drive for about an hour, just drive around through the townships, just see never-ending farmland. It's beautiful. We need to make sure that we're preserving that and doing everything we can. Now, PP&amp;L and business development are go-hand-in-hand. We need to find a way, an alternate way to get around it. We need to make sure that we're not disturbing any of our natural wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
It's nice to see that the Democrats aren't the only tree huggers for once. Look, homeowners are concerned, and their concerns are valid. I urge, and I am not an attorney, but I urge all of the localities to please examine your We need to understand, or actually, it's incumbent upon the industries that are coming in to understand and to make us understand, what resources are they going to use? This isn't a question of when the facilities are coming, but it's about where they go. I agree with Steve that they're meant to be in places where industry is meant to be. They are big industrial complexes. That said, we do need the money. So again, it becomes a negotiation. We want the jobs, but we want this place to feel like home. I will always tell you that if you come to me on council, I will always treat citizens with respect and give you my full and complete attention.
Thank you. Candidate Scarsella.
I am from the southern part of Luzerne County, so that is the buzz in our area. I went to a red carpet breakfast, I believe it was last week, and Senator Walsh talked about data center alley, which is in Loudoun County, Virginia, and he said they had beautiful farmland there and forests, and they kind of devastated the area with the data centers. And they also have very expensive electric bills and water bills. I don't know enough about it, but he says that you could actually Google it and see, you know, the devastation. And I do believe with my colleagues here too, that, you know, economic development has a place, and I don't believe it's farmland or people's property. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Lombardo is next.
Thank you. I love Southern Luzerne County, I spend a lot of time in it. I also love our farmland, I think it's very beautiful, and I appreciate all the work that our farmers do because they are truly the unsung heroes of our society, providing the food that we eat. I think we need to understand what our role is as county council. We control the zoning, we have a zoning office that controls the zoning for about 20 municipalities in the county. And I'll be honest, I hate that we have that ability, because right now our policy's one-size-fits-all, and we are updating it. We're going to bring forth updates that involve data centers and where they can be placed. But one of the things that we've been talking about significantly on council is these tax abatements, these LERTAs. And one thing that hasn't been said yet is that we only give these tax abatements on blighted industrial land. So that's the only place where we've been doing this as of late. So it's not happening on farmland. Yes, I understand that the power line is an issue, and, you know, I think that council has done all that we can on it. We're certainly wanting to advocate for the residents, you know, with the PUC. But the other thing to remember too is, this is kind of a bipartisan issue that people agree on. President Trump and Governor Shapiro both support these data centers and streamlining the process for getting them built.
Thank you. And candidate Williams will round this question out.
Yeah, I'm not a proponent or favor data centers going in on agricultural land. I've been down in the southern part of the county doing a lot of door-knocking. It's a beautiful, beautiful area, and I've been thinking about this, the power line, data centers while I've been doing this. LERTAs are for blighted land, mine scarred land, and not on agricultural land, and that's usually not the case, but what's happened here is it was how the transmission got to these data centers. Even though they're, that hazel nut data center is going to be on blighted land, they need an upgrade to the power lines to get there. Back in February, when this was in the Infrastructure Committee, I sent an email to the members of the committee saying, how is this going to affect the residents of the county? Will you ask the question on how the upgrades to the system, the electrical grid, will take place? And I don't recall that being asked. I know now that it is in the hands of the hearing, and I will be following it very closely with the residents. Thank you.
I thank you very much, and that rounds out the questions for the evening. We do have, however, a closing statement, and that will be one minute, not surprisingly. And we will begin the closing statement with candidate Perziah.
I want to thank the League of Women for the opportunity to talk to the voters. I served 25 years on Luzerne Borough Council, and in that position, each year we had to balance the budget. It taught me how to govern and plan for the future for, as projects for infrastructure. I learned to listen to people, what they need, and how to work to get things done for all the people. I was a support staff president at Valley West and got a contract for the women for the very first time. I was 25 years PSCA Legislative Committee, so I know how laws are written and how they're passed. I'm running to improve infrastructure and to protect the rights of the taxpayers and the employees. I humbly ask you for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
I thank you. We now move to candidate Williams.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum, and thanks to all of you for being here tonight. I am asking for your vote on November 4th. If elected, I will work tirelessly for all residents of our county, making sure that their best interests are always at the forefront. I am committed to doing the homework on every issue that comes before council and to ask the questions that need to be asked. I will be a strong advocate for transparency and accountability in county government. Just as importantly, I will work with the other members of council, both Republicans and Democrats, to best serve the residents, strengthen our county as a whole, and support the employees who keep it running every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is candidate Lombardo.
Thank you very much, everybody, for being here tonight. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum. Over the last four years, Luzerne County has seen a lot of growth, and that's due to the hard work that myself and others at this table have put in. Together with our administration, we've kept taxes low while our neighboring counties are raising them 10%, 20%, 30%. We paid down over $100 million in county debt and increased our credit rating twice. We've allocated over $100 million to road and bridge projects. We've stabilized our government after several years of high turnover. We've streamlined departments while increasing services. We've committed over $7 million to first responders, fed tens of thousands of food-insecure children, eliminated property taxes for wounded veterans, and helped over 900 small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And that's just a snapshot of what we've done, but there is still a lot of work to do. I will continue to put the residents before my own goals, like I do in my job, putting the lives of those in danger above myself every single day. I thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Next is candidate Scarsella.
Thank you all for being here tonight and to the League of Women Voters. I've been proud to serve our community from my time on the Hazleton Area School Board, where I worked hard to balance budgets without burdening families, to my work at Penn State Hazleton, helping students succeed through alumni and donor support. I care deeply about Luzerne County because this is my home, and like you, I want it to be a place where our families can thrive. Whether it's serving on local boards, volunteering, or rescuing dogs and cats in need of a second chance, giving back is at the heart of who I am. On Election Day, I'd be honored to earn your support and your vote so we can bring responsible leadership, fiscal accountability, and common sense solutions to Luzerne County. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Bellis.
Thanks to everybody. I'm running for Luzerne County Council because I know that residents matter more than revenue and that our problems require brains and real thought in order to get the real answers. And I can tell you that as long as the answer is the correct answer, I'm not really concerned, everybody close your ears on the D side, but I'm not concerned with whether my party is okay with it or not. It's the correct answer, and I'm here to really get to that and to find what the, what the real answers are that solve our problems. I'd rather be a good neighbor than a good Democrat at the end of the day. I think that that's just the place that I come from. I am a Democrat, but, you know, the truth is worth more than that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Wulovich.
Again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for holding this forum and for all the residents in attendance. You know, it's all your decision. You know, I look at these name tags, I see R and D, you know, I wish it said LC for Luzerne County, because that's what we're running for. We're running for the residents of Luzerne County. We shouldn't be worried about Republican, Democrat. We need to be worried about what is affecting the people we represent. You know, I take pride in council, you know, first time I was there, it was 10-1. I still work with the Democrats. 7-4, I still work with the Democrats. You know, it doesn't matter about majority, minority, it matters about what is the right thing. Everybody has ideas. They're not all the right ideas, they're not all the wrong ideas, but... They're not all the right ideas, they're not all the wrong ideas, but working together, we can come to a common idea that works for the most amount of people. Everybody in this room, you are important to me, you know, I'm working for you, I have nobody else to work for, there's no special interests, you know, people say that all the time on Facebook and in the newspapers, you know. I'm here for you. At the end of the day, I hope I have your support, because I will always fight for you regardless of R, D, Libertarian, Green, Independent, it doesn't matter. I'm here for everybody in Luzerne County.
Thank you. Candidate Simmons.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Thank you for the, the League of Women Voters to putting on this forum for us. I am the sum total of my life experiences. My life has started a real rocky road in the Bronx, straight on through to serving Desert Storm, being in wartime circumstances, in theater while bombs going off. And I bring all of these talents and all of this leadership skills with me to, to the table to hopefully ask for your vote and for your support in being council. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Urban.
Once again, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight here at the League of Women Voters Forum. Appreciate all of you for taking the time to listen to all of us. Thank you, Ms. Simmons, for your service in the military. I just want to say, you know, you need people that are quick, on their feet, don't have to learn the job, need people with experience, that already know the role of county government and know what to do. It's, it's not easy, but you also have to know where the line of separation is and, and what you can or can't do as a county council person, and kind of know your role, and then who you have to collaborate with, whether it be a state rep, state senator, local municipal body of government, or school district, whatever it may be. But most of the times, you have to understand what county government does first. There are a lot of things we can't do, and there's a lot of things we can do. But ultimately, we want Luzerne County to be the best place where you can live, work, and play, and we want to make sure the business is here. We want to treat our employees with respect and, and make sure they're earning enough money so they can, they can live and work here. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Thornton.
Again, thank you, everybody, for coming out. I know you have a lot of other things you could have been doing, but you're here with us, so thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, experience does matter in these, these kind of events. Some of us on this stage today have been serving on county council for the past four years. Our main role is the budget and the purse strings of the county. That's according to our charter. So let's take a look where we are today. Our county pension balance, as of last week, stands at $340 million, the highest it's ever been. As John said down there, our county's rating is now an A rating by Standard and Poor's. We paid down our debt to $83 million from where it was 15 years ago, $466 million. We have the funds and grants in place to finally replace the three major bridges spanning the Sescou and the River, and those projects are finally moving forward. I, I could go on and on, but I'm limited with time. I just ask that you go with experience and support us November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Coslet.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for being here, the League of Women Voters, and everybody sitting up at this table tonight to take the time. After a 23-year career at the Luzerne County Correctional Facility, I must say that it was a great career. I retired from there, I receive a pension, healthcare, and at this time, it's time for me to give back to Luzerne County. They gave me so much, they gave me a great career, I met fantastic people that I worked with, and I feel it's time for me to give back to Luzerne County. And yes, experience does count, but everybody on that panel ran for the first time as well and got elected and learned how to do their jobs. So yes, experience does count in some areas, but as I said, everybody had to run for a first time. So with your help, we will get there. I appreciate your vote, but more importantly, I appreciate your time. And if you're not voting for myself as a Democrat, I don't care if you're a Democrat or a Republican, there's still no problems at all whether you vote for me or not. So anything you need, please let me know. Stay safe going home. Thank you.
Thank you, and that rounds things out for the evening. I would like to thank all of the candidates. I would also like to thank the audience and the League of Women Voters for a very interesting evening. Thank you so much. Safe travels home.
If your, I know a lot of questions were submitted, if your question was not submitted, please visit their campaign sites, talk to them, reach out, let them know what's of concern to you. And, and thank you again to our candidates and our moderator. Everyone have a safe journey home. Thank you.
Thank you.